Okay, it's 6:00 PM. We'll call to order the December 2021 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. Mr. Goodwin, could you please call the roll?
All right. Ms. Will Cutt.
Here.
Mr. Harwell. Mr. Respinto.
Here.
Mr. Armstead.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Broadhead. Ms. Andress.
Here.
Mr. Cronteras.
Here.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Goodwin circulated our minutes from November, from last meeting in November 2nd. Did everyone have a chance to review those? And if so, do you have any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I'll second.
Who made the motion?
Um, I just said I'd entertain a motion. I think we just have a second. We'll count Mr. Respinto's as a motion.
And I'll second that.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, those are approved. All right, so communications from the chairperson, I have none. Mr. Wilson, the vice chairman's not here, but I understand Mr. Smith, you had some statements you wanted to make on the record.
I do, that's right. Bittersweet announcement. Better for us and more sweet for Vicky Smith because after Friday she plans to pursue the retirement. Super jealous. I've learned so much since I've been here in this short time. Vicky's knowledge and her calm demeanor on the fourth floor certainly going to be missed. So we wish her the best. Keep your cellphone on. Because we're going to ring it a lot. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and thank you, Vicky. We, I truly appreciated working with you on this board, another board as well, and you're definitely going to be missed. And I've seen people unretire from this field several, several times. I'm not suggesting that you do that, but I'm sure you would be welcome back with open arms.
This is a touching point.
That's what I understood, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, well, thank you. All right, so let's now turn to our cases for tonight. We have no old business. The first case listed under new business was a resurvey, case number RS21-12-01 relating to 275 Lake Shore Parkway. We understand that has been carried over and will be heard here at 6:00 PM on January 4th next month, 2022. So the first business tonight is case RG21-12-02. It's the applicant is Nathan Spence with the Forsight Group, Forsight Group, and this relates to 1040 Green Springs Highway. Mr. Spence, if you'd come forward and state your case, please.
Thanks, everyone. Do I need to sign in or?
Yes, please do. Thank you.
I'm actually, I'm Nathan Spence with Forsight Group, with Civil Engineers, working with Westbury Investments on this. And I'm going to let Asaf Stein come up here and talk about the project, if that's okay. And I can answer engineering questions after the fact.
Good evening. Thank you guys for your time and consideration. My name's Asaf Stein, representing Westbury Investments LLC. So we're here tonight because we want to rezone our property at 1040 Green Springs, which is currently zoned NPD to R5. And we're requesting it because it's sort of a unique property. You know, you think of Green Springs, and as it comes over that last hill south towards Lake Shore, it sort of makes this abrupt transition to a very, you know, high foliage, little neighborhoods of Drexel and Columbiana, both sort of perched above Green Springs, whoever's looking at. So they actually sit in stark contrast from the more northern parts of Green Springs. So it's a very transition area just there as Broadway hits Green Springs. And so we have the property literally just up the intersection from there. And we thought, so what can we do with this property? It's really been sitting vacant, hasn't been developed at all as far as we knew. And we looked at it, part of it's in the floodplain, but part of it's not. It's about, you know, sort of a two-third, one-third split. And we thought, oh, well, the flatter part that's higher up that's out of the floodplain, maybe we could build something on it. But even though it's in this sort of transition area from where Green Springs stops being commercial and suddenly becomes, you know, very residential with Drexel and Columbiana, it's still on Green Springs. And being zoned NPD, it's, you know, it's less attractive for people to have a single-family home with their front yard right there on high-traffic, high-volume Green Springs. You know, just less attractive for young families to have children playing in the yard right there on Green Springs. So we thought, is there some kind of compromise that we could do functionally and aesthetically that would sort of serve both purposes? That would sort of maintain an aesthetic that didn't sort of, wasn't a sore thumb or an eyesore for a residential area, but still would be attractive to potentially to people who would want to live in that area? Because it's a great area. You can hop on Green Springs and shoot down to UAB. You can hop on Lake Shore, and there's 65 right there. So it's very convenient, but just its specific location was, in our view, sort of slightly less amenable to like a single-family home. And so what we thought we would do is build really a small, sort of modest boutique flats that our architect, that Barrett Architecture would be designing from scratch. It would be a unique one-off. And the idea would be to make it look like, almost like a home. Like you'd have to do a double take as you drove down Green Springs to make sure that it's not a home. So it wouldn't be a Broadway 2.0 or a mixed-use or any of the continue, you know, any of the other sort of uses that you think of when you think of the northern part of Green Springs, but would be a small, small multifamily that aesthetically would look potentially like a single-family. The other thing was that it, the property itself, it is sort of uniquely situated, not only in this part of Green Springs, but topographically. So as you guys know, the floodplain actually comes on both sides of the property as you go south. So there's natural physical barriers on all sides of the property facing the Drexel neighborhood and as well as the Columbiana neighborhood perched above. And it's really, it looks like a dense jungle foliage, honestly. You, yeah, you can see the southwest and the southeast corners of the rectangle. I had some really nice drone footage that I took showing exactly that. You have to get up really several hundred feet to even peek above the canopy to see the adjacent homes in Drexel and Columbiana. So that was a nice little barrier. Because again, it's such a unique little quick transition from the commercial, the commercial look of Green Springs to this nice little residential pocket sandwich between Lake Shore, Green Springs, and 65. And so we wanted to maintain that. So the way to do that was to aesthetically make it look sort of like a single-family home, a really nice boutique-style flat. And then the other way is not only with the existing topography and existing foliage, which is quite dense, but also on top of that adding landscape architecture that would keep the secluded nature, not only of our property, but the adjacent properties. And so, and in our, we had a meeting with the neighbors, and some of them came and voiced some really good concerns about lighting and certain things like that. And I thought we had some, I incorporated a lot of those concerns into the aspects of some of the design moving forward. Making sure there's not a lot of light pollution, making sure there's not a lot of noise pollution. And we can get into some of those details later if they come up. So that's sort of where we are. Sort of a unique property, sitting at the junction of commercial Green Springs, becoming this little residential pocket, and of course, right down the street from Edgewood, Gian Marcos, and that sort of stuff. So because it was uniquely situated that way, we thought, let's maybe try get it rezoned R5 so that we can build this very, very specific application. Of course, you know, I really wouldn't, wouldn't dream of, there really aren't any other properties in the area that I would even dream of rezoning because they would stick out like a sore thumb, because they would be inconsistent with NPD. But this one, because of its location on Green Springs, with frontage on Green Springs Highway, and its sort of unique topographical and foliage seclusion, I think we can make it work. I think we can make something that would not stick out like a sore thumb. The opposite, would be aesthetically pleasing, and would be consistent with the use.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up the public portion, I just want to remind everyone here, this body for rezoning issues, we are an advisory body. So we will vote at the end of this case, and we'll recommend, by whatever the vote is, negatively or positively, to city council. City council, I assume in January, would hear this case. That'll be noticed in due time. So just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. Second, if you do come forward to speak on this case, we have a register up there where you can write your name and address, so we have a record of who spoke. If you would do that, I'll try to remind you as you come up because, you know, people forget that sometimes. So the third thing is, if we have a, you know, it looks like we have a pretty good crowd here tonight. If we could try to keep our comments, any public comment to roughly three minutes, we're probably not going to, unless it's abused, we're probably not going to time that. But if you could keep your comments short and brief. Before tonight, we've received, I think, seven letters, including, seven letters or emails, including one came in a few moments before we started, expressing their opinions. I think they were all mostly from the Drexel neighborhood behind, expressing their concerns about the project. So, all right, with that said, I'll open up the public portion of the hearing. If you have anything to say on this case, come up, as I mentioned, put your name down, your address down, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes, I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name's Tom Callison. My address is 1100 Fern Street. We've got a, as we heard the request, you pay attention to the property more. And when I looked at it, to me, the only thing that makes sense is to keep it single-family, like what it was intended to be, the Neighborhood Preservation District, to preserve the neighborhood. So like my house is within 500 feet of this. So we're in the circle that's drawn on the map that was sent out. So thanks for including me on that. It's set for five, right now, there's five lots, if I'm not mistaken, five single-family lots. You know, it doesn't seem like, seems like he's asking a lot to change a lot, just to go for three extra, three extra units. But I think it should stay Neighborhood Preservation District. I think that that's what the neighborhood, if we're talking about making improvements on Green Springs, nice houses on Green Springs would make that area better. That's what you want to see. You know, the things that come with it, well, it's, you need a dumpster. We don't want to hear dumpsters, open and closing. It, the, right down the road, there's another, you know, multifamily, R7, was it the Village or on Raleigh, on the intersection of Raleigh? That, that's not very pleasing. That's not in line with the, with our neighborhood. So, I mean, that's, that's my thoughts. You know, whatever it takes to get single-family houses there, I think, I think that would be my preference. I don't think that we should change it. If you want to do multifamily, go across to the fish market, you know, on that side of the street. Find a spot that, that doesn't want single-family houses, and it's farther away from other single-family houses. And zone down. Try, I mean, don't zone up, you know. I don't think that's good practice. So I would advise to, to keep it NPD. Thank you.
Well, you're going to have an opportunity after the public portion's over. We're going to have questions as well, so you can address anything that's raised and make a note of it, just to help, it'll help us if you can address the comments that are made as well. Okay.
Start of my timer. Will Dahlberg, I work in radio, so I'm used to being on time and punctual. Will Dahlberg, 1040 Drexel Drive. I have the unique privilege, my, we are now raising the fourth generation on Drexel Drive. That is my daughter, Marley. We were one of the, my, we, I live in the Joe and Virginia Green House. After World War II, Joe used his money to build one of the first houses on Drexel Drive. We are very, very proud of that fact. Very proud that our daughter went to Hall Kent. We very strongly believe in our neighborhood. Pandemic started. I started our neighborhood Facebook group. We are a very tight-knit community. Our neighborhood is already backed up against apartments, dumpsters, as referenced, lots of noise. The green space we're already talking about, that is the one buffer we have that helps isolate our neighborhood already. It, the recent construction on Green Springs has been a nightmare for our neighborhood already. So the idea of eliminating that green space, also the wildlife that is there, is pretty remarkable. I think doing anything more than a single home, family home unit, it's, it's hard to imagine. The traffic is already bad enough there, no matter which direction you're going. And, I mean, the flooding issues are pretty significant already. So eliminating that green space is, it's hard to imagine. So in representing our neighborhood and others who are going to speak, I would highly recommend that you stick to a single-family unit here and not pursue more houses in a very tight confined space. So, thank you.
Would you sign in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi. Thank you all for being here and for soliciting public input. My name is Kia Craft. I'm a resident of Homewood. I'm also a member of the Homewood Library Board, so I appreciate your time and your public service. I live at 1017 Drexel Parkway, so I'm at one of those properties that abuts the proposed rezoning. I'm here to speak against the proposal to rezone this property. And I am, as I say that, I'm sympathetic to the demand for more housing in Homewood. I understand that there's a lot of demand, but I'm really against the idea of upzoning a single-family lot. That is a very large property, but it's deceptive, deceptively large because there's a very large ravine behind it, which is where all of the stormwater from our neighborhood goes. This is really nervous. I'm nervous in front of you all. And so, and as you may know, all of that stormwater goes down to Lake Shore, goes down to Griffin Creek, and then into the watershed. And all of that stormwater floods out those apartments downstream from us on Lake Shore. So I would be cautious about the decision to take a property that's been totally undeveloped and put a fairly significant development on it. My other concern is that rezoning this property could impact the other properties on Green Springs that are single-family units. I don't see how, if a proposal came, if you approved this zoning change and a proposal came to sell the lot next door and to make that multifamily, I don't see how you could say no to that. But that would have a tremendous impact on our neighborhood. I do, as, as one of my neighbors said before, I'm very sympathetic to downzoning, to creating more multifamily units in Homewood through that approach to zoning and through mixed-use development, where I think there's a lot of opportunity to do that. But Homewood is known for its residential lots. That's why people want to live in Homewood. A friend of mine said that that is sacred in Homewood. So I would ask you to consider voting no on this proposal. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mary Binkley. I live at 1103 Fern Street. And I, my main concern is the traffic. Because as I'm listening to the presentation and looking at the maps, I don't see where the cars are going to be coming in and out of this neighborhood that they're planning. That gets really intense twice a day, right there on Green Springs. And I'm thinking if cars are coming in and out, it's going to be tough, especially since they cut our turn lane coming in. Now it's congested it more. And then there's all these hidden driveways that sit on either side of it. And I don't see where the traffic is going to come in and out. And more hidden driveways are going to be even more accidents. I mean, there's a lot of accidents right there at that intersection. So that's my main concern with what's going on, is the traffic.
Thank you, Ms. Binkley. Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay. I think we have someone coming.
So I'm Trish Cannon. I, my property is going to be right behind that. And I came into Homewood about 20 years ago. And I live by myself. A lot of other people are single on my little cul-de-sac. I had 1109 Drexel Drive. And it's, I bought it because it had the wonderful buffer zones. I had a wonderful buffers, buffer zone between me and I-65. A lot of those trees got kind of razed down for the money anticipated building more apartments, the Raleigh apartments. And now I still have a nice buffer zone between me and Green Springs, and of course, the ravine, which has been flooding, as you know. And that's, it's kind of like, I have this nice little secluded neighborhood that nobody knows is there. So I feel really safe there, like I said, because nobody even knows it's there. And I'm, I guess I would be concerned, I haven't made a decision, so I'm not going to say for or against, but I'd say some of the things I would be concerned about are, I think one of those houses is a historic house that is beautiful and I love passing. I'm certainly worried about noise, and I'm certainly worried about the lights and the drainage. So I have a lot more questions. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. I know, I heard you say you lived on Drexel. Did you give your street address?
1109 Drexel Drive. I'll be directly.
And I know you wrote your name down, but I didn't hear you say.
I'm Trish Cannon. Trish Cannon.
All right, thank you.
Hello. My name is Blake Hobbs. I live at 1112 Drexel Parkway. And I just would like to say what everyone said I agree with against the rezoning. So, thank you. I would
This is not what I thought I would be doing at 73 years old, but here I am. I bought on Fern Street about 13 years ago. I love the secluded little neighborhood. One of the things that is of concern is the, is the buffer zone. Because already, I sit right on the hill. You can see my house from the end of Broadway. And I can hear, even where I am now with the buffer zone, I can hear all those cars. And that's okay. I love my neighborhood, but I would really regret to see that, that we remove a natural buffer zone. And I'm concerned about the traffic. I take my great-granddaughter, who's back there, not behaving very well, to school at Hall Kent. And I'm going in and out of there twice a day. I don't know, I don't know where the traffic would go. Are you going to put it coming out onto Green Springs? There's no way to turn left there. They would have to turn right. And then if you turn right, then you're going into that busy, dangerous intersection that's had several wrecks there since I've been there. The other option, and I don't even know that it's an option, would be to take it out on a little side street. You know, I don't, I don't know what you would do with all of that. But the buffer zone and the traffic, those are two of my major concerns.
Thank you. Could we get your name and address for the record?
Judith Corrington. And I'm on 1101 Fern Street. I did not intend to bring her tonight, but her dad did not get home in time.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Davis. I live at 1025 Drexel Parkway, which is a lot that doesn't directly abut the, the proposed change. But I could walk out of my deck, throw a rock and hit it. So, and in fact, that's one of the not throwing rocks. But walking out on my deck and looking across the creek is one of the most favorite things that we love to do in my house. And it's one of the reasons why the properties along this particular curve of Drexel Parkway are so valuable. And so beloved, I think, is because there's a great deal of wildlife back there. We can enjoy the creek. It's, some people might call it a drainage dish, but it's grown up over the years. It was developed, as you know, probably in 1957. So it's a quite long time that it's been this way. One of the things that I wanted to point out is there's a reason why this property that we're talking about tonight was not, has not been developed for 60 years. And I think that one of the reasons is because, is because it takes a lot, it'll take a lot of engineering to develop these, this set of lots, right? Because it, part of it is in a floodplain. Part of it is, it caps the end of the creek where it turns and goes underneath the highway. And so this is one of the reasons why I oppose the rezoning. Because as you, you may have received my letter, by the way. I sent it yesterday, and I outlined some of the reasons. Most of them are the same ones that have already been mentioned. I don't want to belabor that, belabor those. But one of the things that I do want to point out is that this, the whole kind of hillside from in between Green Springs and I-65 there has been undeveloped, despite several attempts to do so over the years. So before, we've been on Drexel Parkway about 16 years. And even before we got there, there was an attempt to develop the other end by the interstate, which was successfully fought off by the neighborhood. And there will be future efforts to develop this land, right? Because as Homewood continues to develop, as I'm sure you know, in its value and appeal, people are going to want to come in to develop. But they're not going to want to put single-family homes right here because it's just not economically viable. That's one of the questions we raised. The, I have no qualms with the approach that the developers took. They invited us to a meeting. We all talked. They said they wanted to hear our input on what we would like to see at the new development. But when we arrived, what we discovered, they really were asking is, do we want two, three-unit buildings or one, eight-unit building? They weren't really asking, you know, do you, what do you think about putting single-family homes here? And when I raised that question, they essentially said, well, it's just too expensive. Which is hard for me to believe, given the property values of Homewood and how they're accelerating. So I think that what we're talking about really is a tremendous amount of re-engineering to make this property develop-able. So that's one concern that I had. The other concern was just that kind of what Dr. Craft was saying earlier about kind of upzoning. If you, if you, if, I also agree that I want to support any affordable housing that we can have in Homewood. I'm all for that. And I think there's many opportunities for that about half a mile over the hill in the commercial area of Green Springs, where you could easily rezone there. You could decrease some of the runoff issues that are, come from all of the parking lots. And you could And you could have, I think, a good bit of success there by kind of downzoning some of those areas. But I don't think this is the way to go. And I just want to encourage us to be creative and to, to think about kind of the long-term possibilities here. Because eliminating this chunk of greenery essentially makes our neighborhood less desirable.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you all being here and, and your service to our city.
Let me get uncaught for my mask. Hello.
My name is Patty Bank.
I have lived at 1101 Drexel Parkway for 22 years now. It's a great neighborhood. And I think you can tell because the people that are here to speak for it. It's surrounded, it's right up against 65, but it is surrounded by trees. When my uncle came to visit from LA, he sat out on our back deck and said, this is so beautiful you get to walk out here and see this. And so I'm just asking, when we think about building, as you drive down Homewood streets, do you ever look at a house and think, man, it'd be nice to have an apartment there instead of that home? I think building more is not necessarily building better. And I just want to reiterate everything that the people have said here, to consider that. And the, how the building will affect the creek, the flooding, the trees, and just the sense of what Homewood is and what it should look like in the vision that you have for it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you. Like Jonathan, Jonathan said, thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Rice. And I share my home with my husband, David Rice, at 1021 Drexel Parkway. And I'm just here to voice our opposition as an abutting property. I registered that opposition via a letter, but just wanted to add to the voices here. I have nothing new to add, but just wanted to echo it with my presence. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can anyone else from the public wish to speak on this case?
I had a couple of other signatures of folks who could not be here tonight. Is there a way I can enter those on the record?
The, just signatures on a...
A petition.
On a petition?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can, we can share that with, if you want to give that to Mr. Goodwin. We could add that to the record.
These folks wanted to register their opposition but could not physically be present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Michelle Blackwood. And I don't live in the neighborhood, but I live in Homewood at 401 Woodland Drive. I'm also president of Friends of Shades Creek. And we're concerned about stormwater in Homewood, all over Homewood. And from looking at this development, it looks like it would add a lot of extra concrete with the multiple homes and could further cause problems in Shades Creek and for the homes downstream from Shades Creek. It looks like, I haven't actually seen, you know, the measurements, but it looks like the barrier, the buffer in the front is very narrow and might not provide the kind of buffer that the developer's talking about it would be. I'm not sure that the trees could live in such a narrow buffer area. And the ravine in the back, I'm not sure how it's going to be impacted with this development and whether it would be filled in. And that could be a real tragedy for Shades Creek and causing more stormwater issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to speak on this case? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Spence, if you would come back up, please? And Mr. Stein as well, I guess?
Yes.
You, you heard the comments from, from the people in the audience and I just want to go through a few of the things that kept on being brought up and, and get your response. And we're not, we're not dealing with the development plan right now. We're not dealing with any sort of concrete description of what you would build, just kind of an idea, I think. But one of the things I think that came up over and over and over again was, was the flooding issue and particularly being, this proposed property being kind of at the headwaters of, of Shades Creek in terms of where the water enters that ravine and then goes further down. Have, have you guys looked into what sort of flooding abatement or water retention plans that you, you might have? Or, you know, have you gotten anywhere down that road? If so, would you share what you, what you plan to do?
Yeah, so, nothing in specific, but I think for a development like this with the, with the space constraints we have with the, with the floodplain there, you know, number one, we are trying to, to come up, we, you know, some of the iterations that we've sent to, to the staff and have kind of iterated with ourselves, we've slowly grown, grown more and more compact to try to stay out of that as much as possible. So that's number one, is to, to come up with a site plan that stays out of that, that flood, that blue line right there on the screen. And, and I believe the one that we have, you know, more or less does. And so that's number one. And then number two is obviously, you know, the city of Homewood has stormwater regulations, just whether you're next to a floodplain or not, that we would have to provide detention, you know, in order to, to reduce the, the peak runoff rate that would be leaving the property. And so we're definitely prepared to do that. Probably, like I was saying, for this type of development, it might be some sort of underground detention, which we've used in lots of applications all over. And, and that will definitely, you know, the, the idea is that, you know, that detention facility, whether that's underground or above ground, is, is got an outlet structure that is designed to allow the, the runoff to be released at a slower rate than it does currently right now without any development. So you're going to be, you know, trickling out the water so that the, the runoff is less than the pre. And, you know, I'll say too, you know, kind of the way it's zoned now, if, if we built, if there was a single-family home built, from a stormwater perspective, wouldn't have to provide a detention pond. Just build a house, pave your driveway, do what you need to do. And theoretically could, could cause more flooding issues than, than what we're doing with our development here when we would be providing detention, so.
Okay, and I'm not trying to monopolize all the questions here, but just, I know there are other subjects that, that they've brought up that you'll want, want to address. But one of the things I wrote down early on, I believe Mr. Stein said this, is that this, these lots, and I think there's six lots, five or six, five or six? That they're not, that building single-family homes is not an attractive, you know, attractive use from your perspective. And I guess, A, I just want to get a little bit more information from you and why you believe that. And B, how many of those lots are, are buildable, knowing that floodplain's there and that ravine's there? How many, how many of those lots would be?
So it's essentially two and a half. Two and a half of the three have, have buildable area. Conservally, I would say two. And to answer your first question, it's not that it's unattractive, it's simply less attractive. Because, we feel just because, simply because it's a high-traffic area. It's Green Springs Highway. It's two lanes this way, two lanes north, two lanes south, big median. It's a high-traffic area. As you've heard from many of the neighbors, one of the main attractive, you know, characteristics of their neighborhoods is that it's not high, high-traffic. Drexel's a cul-de-sac. Columbiana's like, has one in and one, and one out. So there's not tons of people driving through the neighborhood. You, you don't want, you don't want to start having to put in speed bumps or slow down our kid, our kids' play here, that sort of stuff. And Green Springs Highway, you do have a lot of those same, a lot of those concerns that you simply don't have a Drexel in Columbiana. So it's something that's unattractive. It's not that it's impossible to, to build a single-family home there. It's just simply less attractive than, than neighborhoods that are more secluded, that are cul-de-sacs, that do not have through-traffic. Of course, Green Springs Highway being the ultimate through-traffic. It connects Lake, you know, Lake Shore downtown, 65, so it's, it's simply less attractive.
And that's true for ostensibly the people who lived in, live in these units as well, I guess. I mean, they're also living on Green Springs.
Right. So our, our initial thoughts were, were just to be targeting young professionals. Now, it's not to say that, that, that families couldn't be living there, that, not at all. But simply that we'd be targeting our professionals that'd be more likely to be, not have, you know, children, children and dogs playing in the front yard, that sort of thing. And that's, that's part, one of the reasons we were looking at the rezoning.
And, and these would be rental? Well, I know you, you don't have a final plan and you're not tied to anything, but, did you anticipate these being apartments for rent?
Yes, yeah. We, we, we were thinking about either doing townhomes to sell, but then we thought this, a lot of the same problems. And so we shifted to favoring like long-term leases, which we would try to incentivize in the lease as well. So there wouldn't be a lot of high turnover. So there'd be people that, although they don't own the property, would be living there for hopefully, you know, three, four, five-plus years. And, and staying there for that long would, would begin to develop a sense of, you know, of community, whereas high-turnover apartments that are at, at potentially a lower price range would, would not. You'd have a high turnover. That's what we were trying to avoid.
I'm going to let some of my other commission members ask their questions, sorry.
I just have a, a comment. You know, just like all the residents said, you know, zoning changes are a big deal. And it's kind of hard to make a decision on a lot of what-ifs. I would have been a little bit more prepared to come to this meeting with maybe some visuals of what you're planning on building for these residents. Because basically what y'all are saying that it's not worth building single-family homes in a neighborhood where they've invested in their single-family homes. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Sure, sure.
So, you know, I would have had some pictures of what I'm planning on building, what I'm planning on doing, how we're going to do it. You know, it's just a lot of what-ifs and a lot of conjecture and a lot of, well, we plan on doing this. And you realize it's hard to change zoning on what-ifs.
Sure, I, I, I can, I can simply...
And that's, that's what I'm trying to say. Like, you guys have like not appeased these people in, in any shape or form, just, you know, by not being prepared enough.
So I, I, I certainly can appreciate what you're saying. So we, we do have plans and we also do have drawings of, of the proposed buildings, both, we had townhomes and apartments, which we presented at the neighborhood meeting as well.
Well, you should have brought them here.
Yeah, well, I, I...
And, 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 you know, you should have included them in the packets that we're trying to make a decision on here.
Unfortunately, because of just sort of the, the emails coming in at, at the last second, I, had they, had they come in with a little bit more time, I would have been able to say, oh, okay, I, I see sort of the, the running theme here or what, what the main concerns are. Let me bring in some extra material just to make sure that everybody's on the same page and everything's clear, to not leave anything up to imagination. But, you know, unfortunately, we, we did, we did not do that.
Yeah, I don't think we realized we could, we could have a presentation of, of some sort, and so...
Yeah, I didn't know if it was beyond the scope of the meeting or not. That's, that's, that's our fault. We apologize.
Regardless of what happens with this group, you, you know, again, we're making a recommendation to city council, you know, that, that's the sort of thing you might want to take into consideration.
Yeah, certainly.
Although...
That's my recommendation. I'm trying to say.
Can I ask real quick? Heard a lot about traffic. I count, do I count 22 parking spots? Do you guys have a, I guess, response to that? I mean, it, it does feel like a valid concern. I see where the, you know, where, where the access to Green Springs is, but just that, you know, it's eight units, 22 parking spots, I guess conceivably it could be eight people, it could be 16 cars, whatever. But is there sort of an explanation for, you know, what your thoughts are on the traffic flow coming out of there?
Yeah, so, a couple of things. You know, I think there's kind of a distinction between traffic versus the parking. And so traffic concerns, we, we did a kind of a rough traffic cow. And I think we came up with, you know, 20 trips a day for eight, eight units for this type of development. And that's just kind of based on the standard kind of calculation. And so we don't anticipate it being a, you know, a normal amount of trips. And we do have ride-in-only entrance and then a ride-out-only exit. So they would have to be directed through a one-way drive around the units. And the city's parking calculations for this zoning require two parking spaces per unit. And so that would be 16. And so we ended up with 22 because, you know, just in case there's, you know, some visitors and that sort of thing, so you have somewhere to park and they're not, you know, trying to park on Green Springs or something. So, yeah, that's how we addressed that.
I would just add that you guys mentioned those traffic and on Green Springs. I would add that the city council has worked on improving the aesthetics of Green Springs that we are putting in greenery, we are putting in medias, we are putting in pedestrian access and bike lanes. And so that is the city's effort to beautify that area. So I just wanted to make that point. I can't let that stand without making that point, so.
Sure.
I also have to just say that NPD, I think the word was used was sacred. And, and I agree a wholeheartedly. You would have to have, in my mind, 100% of the adjacent properties agreeing to rezone for me to support changing an NPD zoning. So I just have to make that point.
What, what sort of, again, I, I preface every question with the same, same line. I know you're, you're not in a final stage of development of your, of your idea, but what sort of price point were you thinking of as a rental for each rental unit upon a monthly basis?
Yeah, so, so we were looking at, at two bedrooms, two baths, and, and some of the comps are looking at anywhere from $2,000 to $2,800 a month.
All right, I'll, I'll entertain a motion. What, does anyone have, did you have a question? Sorry.
I would entertain a motion with respect to RZ 21-12-02.
Before, before the motion, Mr. President, can I make a statement?
Sure.
For this particular case, what is the difference between the development that took place on 18th Street South, coming down from Vulcan on the right-hand side with, I think, seven or eight different apartments? With this one, which is going to be an improvement for the area if it's done the correct way? So, you know, my, my question is, why there should be questions about the development of this particular case?
I can answer that one because that was zoned C2.
I'm sorry?
Because it went from a C2 to an R7. And this is going from an NPD to an R5. It was a downzone.
So if it's NPD, that means they can do two or three homes?
If it's NPD, they can do, there were five lots, they can do five homes, yeah, absolutely. Single-family homes. This was commercial, too. So it could have been a car wash, it could have been a bank drive-through, it could have been a gas station. And I voted to, to, I supported that because R5 is a downzone from C2.
Well, I don't see the difference from the one that you voted down on 18th Street with this one.
I just told you. We, one's a downzone and one's an upzone. That was a commercial lot with no adjacent properties.
Okay. Are there other questions? Entertained a motion?
I'll move to approve. Because you have to make a positive motion. So I'll move to approve.
I don't think we...
We'll second.
I'm sorry?
I'll second.
You second, all right, thank you. All right.
All right. Ms. Wilcott? Mr. Respinto?
No.
Mr. Armstead?
No.
Ms. Andres?
No.
Mr. Cronteras?
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts?
No. Okay, so you'll go to city council with a five-to-one, I think five-to-one vote, recommending against. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just reiterate what the chairman said earlier. When the city council hears this, you will be re-notified of that meeting date, so you can expect another notice in the mail saying when the city council will consider it.
Okay, so, moving along, our next case is, this is an amended development, amended final development plan, AD 21-12-03. It relates to Homewood Hotel LLC, and, which is at 2727 18th Street South, and looks like the applicant, I'm sorry, not the applicant, it's this Homewood Hotel LLC, is the owner, I don't see a name, but whoever's presenting, if you'd come forward, please.
My name is Russell Boylan, I'm with Mam Investments. And what we would like to do is, we amended the development plan, because we rezoned the building that was Wolf Camera, and took it out of the master plan. So we were rezoned, we'd like to redo the final development plan showing that, as it's all as-built now.
Okay. This is a public hearing? Or did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I think that's it. You know, we got, pretty much, everything is developed now and built, and the hotel's doing very well, Eggers is doing very well, and we got Little Donkey and Rodney Scott open now, so it's a big improvement on 18th Street.
Well, thank you. This being a public hearing, I'm gonna open up now the public portion.
Okay.
If anyone who wants to speak, they're gonna come up and speak, and then you can address any questions or comments that come up in the public discussion. As I mentioned just a moment ago, this is a public hearing. If anyone has anything to say about this case, come forward, please.
My name's Scott Bryant, 1830 29th Avenue South, Soho, number 440. Speaking as a citizen, and as co-owner of Soho Square Retail. My first question is, the documentation to support this has not been available for public consumption, which we wrote a letter to that effect. My second issue is, I'm a little flabbergasted about this request, given that it's a mixed-use development zoning that prohibited a restaurant or food service at that location. So all of a sudden, we take two parcels and zone a mixed-use, and then we're gonna have a spa for the hotel. It's all about parking. And it's prohibited on the final development plan for there to be a food establishment or bar in the Wolf Camera. Now, we're amending the final development plan that Eggers has already built, has no parking, along with Rodney Scott and Albario, they're using a parking lot that was supposed to be dedicated to the parking for the hotel. I'll go on record that we do have a lawsuit about this issue. Four warrants, four armed. Thank you.
Good evening. Merry Christmas. My name is David Sensman. I own the property contiguous to the hotel on 28th Avenue, 1806 and 1810 28th Avenue. I also own the property up on the corner that Ark Realty occupies in the corner, Mamie Foster and 28th Avenue. I also own property down Mamie L. Foster, across the street from the hotel. And I also own parcel 2716, which is on the northeast corner of the hotel property, directly behind Eggers. And I'm here tonight out of some concern over the way this has been handled, to get us to this point. There have been numerous amendments made to the original plan that the city has approved, that I want to discuss with you and get your input on. On my property at 2716, the site plan was amended to include encroachment on my property by the installation of utility infrastructure on my property. I was not informed of it, I was not advised of it. I discovered it, and when I did, I was informed that the city knew about it, had approved it, and I asked for something to be done about it, and I was told that the city would do nothing about it. I have supported the project all along the way. I've met with Mr. Moran numerous times, and I am totally in favor of the hotel. I think it's a wonderful project, it's great for Homewood. So I went to, or contacted his office and asked them to correct it, which they did. They moved the infrastructure off of my property, and it now sits within an inch of my property line. Then, later, my property that's at 1806 28th Avenue, that's on the east side of the hotel, was dug up to run a gas line to the hotel, and the gas meter was installed on my property. Again, the city informed me that they were aware of this amendment to the project, but no one had informed me. And I asked the city what was going to be done about it, and they said, we're not gonna do anything about it, because the city has approved that encroachment on your property. I was never advised of it. So again, I went to Mr. Moran's office and asked them to correct it, which they did promptly. The third thing is that the original plan for the hotel, on the east side of the hotel building itself, that is contiguous with my property at 1806 28th Avenue, called for a minimum setback off the property line of five feet. And you can see that clearly in the plan. The site plan was amended and approved by the city, that the setback off of my property line at the nearest point now is seven inches. So you have a five-story building that the city has approved, amending the site plan, so that the setback from my property is seven inches. And so my question, well, now here's the real problem. These approvals by the city were all done in secret, there's no record of it, and it was hidden intentionally from me and the public. And I want to ask you what you think of that, and what should be done.
Well, I appreciate the question, and that's not our role to answer questions like that. We will take public comment, and you've provided yours. We have a very narrow role here, which is just to vote on, to approve an amended development plan, as explained. And I don't think, I understand your concerns about things that happened in the past, but that doesn't address what's in front of us.
Well, what's in front of us right now is that the site plan has been amended dramatically, and I assume that you all approved it. I mean, or you supported that happening, someone here did. But it was done, from the public standpoint, it was done in secret. And so what am I supposed to do? What is your recommendation to the city council, now that the setback for this five-story building, the setback was abandoned by the city, and now it's seven inches at the nearest point? I mean, I'm powerless in this, I don't, how am I gonna be made? Well, I've got, in the three parcels that I've got there on 28th Avenue, my investment's over $2 million. That's been degraded substantially by the city's action of approving the changes to the site plan, but now the building sits seven inches off of my property. And you're getting ready to approve this, and in your proposal for this site plan approval, and like I said, I'm all for the hotel, I think it's great. But all of these changes, these amendments to the site plan have been made and approved by the city, with no public hearing, and no talk about them, and all they were just done in secret, and...
I appreciate that. This board does not meet in secret, we meet here on Tuesday night, the first Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
And so we, we, no, we have one gentleman who's at the microphone right now, can't entertain comments about it.
And I know I've run over my three minutes, so I probably should be through at this point. But I just, I just want to say that I am for the hotel in every way. I think it's a great project, I think it's beautiful, enhances the neighborhood. But these amendments to the site plan that have encroached on my property, and now have degraded the value of my $2 million investment in the 28th Avenue property, is unacceptable. And as this commission should investigate how that was done, and who did that. Why was that approved? Why did that not come before you for that type of significant change in the site plan, where you abandoned the setback from more than, for a minimum of five feet to seven inches?
And I can't address that, and we're not, we're not going to address that tonight, that'd be beyond the scope of while we're here.
Someone needs to address it.
Okay. Well, you have other avenues to address, I think we've heard you, and appreciate your comments.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chairman, I'd like to address the availability of the application and the plan. On the notifications at the bottom, it says you may contact our office, again, plenty of the, the injuries on the questions, give the phone number, or visit between 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. They were in our office, they have been in our office. We've not had anybody go up there and ask us for...
That's not true.
I believe you were directed by one of the consultants to code our office, and we talked to staff, and we all know you, and nobody spoke to you in our fourth floor.
The plans... It wasn't me.
Well, nobody came and asked me to see the plans, or any of these other people here, because they've been there for a while.
We have our work there, five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Herr, and I live at 3108 Overton Drive. And I have a much simpler question. I have, I was complacent for 20 years. I lived in Homewood, and I just thought everything was great, until the downtown rezoning came up, and then I thought, well, maybe things are not as great as I thought. So I have made a concerted effort to attend these meetings, to learn, and to see how the city does business. My question is, if in the beginning of a project, as in the hotel, agreements are made, there's supposed to be a spa there, part of the parking on 18th Street was added to accommodate the spa, and then all these things get amended along the way, so now we go back and reapprove the plan like it's built, not like it was approved to be built. And I don't understand that. Is that the way, is that the way I'm learning that the city does business?
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't address that either. Again, we have a case in front of us, that's all we have in front of us, we have the same information you do.
Okay, but in this case, that is what you're doing, is that correct?
We're amend, we are being asked to amend a final development plan. My understanding is, is that's being done to match what is in place.
To match what has been built.
And, which is the appropriate, if there's something different, it needs to be addressed in an amended plan. And we're the planning commission, so that comes in front of us.
So why even go through the preliminary final plan before something is built?
I'm sorry, that's beyond, again, beyond the scope of what we're here to discuss.
It is what we're here to discuss. Mr. Bryant, the amendments that the plan is previously approved, I mean, it's not a question...
Okay, all right. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Bryant, you've spoken, you've spoken. We're not entertaining comments from the audience. But, Miss, I, again, we have four corners, we have application in front of us, and frankly, most of what I've heard tonight has nothing to do with the application, has to do with history, and I understand if you're upset about that. But that's not what, Mr. Bryant!
You're changing the plan. It does have to be with Eggers, if you did not get a spa. That's the question. And there's no supporting documentation as to why the change is being made.
So, I mean, I don't know, Mr. Bryant, okay, like I said, I am here just to learn how the city does business. So I'm asking you, if you are here tonight to revise what you approved in the beginning, to match what has now been built.
Anything further?
Is that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're not...
I mean, it's just a yes or a no.
Well, no, we're not answering questions, that's not, that's not our role. We ask questions, we gather information, but we, I'm afraid, that's beyond the scope of while we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience or from the public wish to address this case? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public portion. And I'm sorry, was your last name Russell, or did I...
Boylan.
Boylan, I'm sorry, Mr. Boylan, if you could come up and address any questions the commission has for you.
All right.
I couldn't hear exactly what you said.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'll try to speak into the microphone.
All right. It's our understanding that the property was zoned in such that we have a zero lot line with no setbacks on the hotel. And we were told that by the city of Homewood. So the issues that came up about us having to have a setback on that side of the property is not true. It's what we were told by the zoning people, that we didn't have to have, we have a zero lot line.
Based on the type of zoning you have?
Um, mixed-use? Yes, mixed-use. And so, we built, we did everything according to what the city of Homewood told us we had to do. And we have been following through the whole way through, doing exactly what we needed to do to get this building property properly built. The reason for the change is because we, we rezoned the Wolf Camera building to C4A, C4A, which does not require any parking, but we had to take that, once we rezoned it, then we had to redo... then we had to redo this development plan to take that out of the development plan. And that, that's what this is, that's what we want to get approved today, the new revised development plan that shows that's not part of it.
As to parking, you all are using this overflow lot over on Mamie L. Foster, is that right?
I'm sorry.
As to parking, this, this parcel that's over here off of Mamie L. Foster is also being used for parking, is that right?
Yes.
This sort of standalone lot?
Parking for the hotel.
How do people know if they're coming to the hotel that they could park there? And are you sharing that with the restaurants there as well, or?
Basically, what we're doing is, that is the valet parking. We'll go take cars over there to-
Okay. I guess that was funny. So if I was coming to the hotel, where I would park, back, if I, where would I park if I was, like, if I was coming to the hotel, where would I park? Back here, behind the hotel, would I use this lot as well, or is this strictly valet?
For the restaurants?
No, sir. I'm asking about the little adjacent lot that's just right off of Mamie L. Foster, the one that's kind of off by itself, that's behind the restaurants.
I'm sorry. I'm having trouble here.
Yeah, so that yellow, show that map, Kim Ryan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the yellow, the one that's kind of standalone by itself, yeah.
That's, that's the hotel parking lot. That's for the hotel.
And how, and do, how would I know that if I was coming there for the first time? Do you have any signage back there or anything that, that would?
Well, you would be directed to that from the hotel.
Okay.
If the hotel lot was full, they would direct, either direct you or valet park you over there.
Does, does the valet park, does the valet overflow there, or is that, that's regular parking overflow as well? I mean, I could drive there. If I'm just driving my car, I could go park in that lot.
Yeah, you could drive your car and park there.
Okay. I think you should do signage for that lot to direct, I mean, to, for, to make it clear that that is also hotel parking. I think you should have signage there to make that clear.
We would look at that, but, you know, that, that, that lot is owned by the hotel. And the two restaurants there are zoned C4A, which does not have a parking requirement.
That's right. I understand.
Just, could I, just for purposes of the development plan that's going to go forward to council, are you saying that that would be conditioned?
That would be my, I would ask, yeah, I would, I would make that, if I were to move to approve, I would ask for that to be a proffer.
It's already part of the development plan. It's required by the final development plan that that lot be controlled access and have parking signs for the hotel.
There's one other thing I'd like, if I could enter into the record just for informational purposes. The development plan that's, that you're looking at says 213 spaces. That's what's been provided by the developer. The original approved development plan that was approved by ordinance 2669 required 211 spaces. When this goes forward to the council, that needs to say 211 because that's the minimum requirement. Although he's provided 213, 211, just, I just want to enter that into the record, that that's going to say 211.
Thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
Well, that would be my motion. Does he need to make the proffer to me or to us, or is, does that become part of my motion? I'm sorry. That's a procedural question.
Yeah. Could you agree to a proffer to have signage to direct people or to inform the public that that parking off of Mamie Foster is part of the hotel? Could you agree as part of the, as part of the request for approval to make that signage available, or to provide that signage? Now, we're not asking, we're not asking, okay.
Hotel overflow parking. Thank you.
The public portion of the hearing is closed. The question is, it doesn't have to say hotel-only parking. I think what Ms. Andrus is asking is, would the hotel be willing to, as part of its application, to, to, to agree to provide signage for that lot that we were referencing in yellow so that the public knows that that's hotel parking?
This is John Gardner. He's with our office, and he's been more involved with the, with the legal aspect of this, and so that's why I want him to come up.
Yeah. Good evening. I think there are a lot of variations to that request, whether it's how big is the sign, where do you put it, so those type of things.
You can do something that looks nice. I mean, you know, there's signage in Pepper Place, for example, that looks very nice and, you know, goes in, blends into the aesthetics of the, of the area. It doesn't have to be, I'm not asking for a big neon orange sign, but, I mean, I think you could do something nice. You know, we, we've done, made a lot of efforts downtown to do nice signage, directing people to park, you know, under City Hall, or directing people to different areas downtown. We've really made an effort, you know, for example, the sign that's in front of that old police station, you know, that invites parking there, just to, to, you know, let folks know. I'm not asking for something ugly and gaudy. You could do something, you know, attractive and wrought iron and themed with the hotel.
Well, it's not exclusive parking for the hotel only.
That would still be my, that would still be my motion, if that's with the request.
Okay. So, so just from a procedural standpoint, if she's making the motion with that request, do we vote on that and then vote on it without the request?
That would be my understanding. She's making a recommendation that it be approved subject to a proffer, but of course, you're not accepting that proffer. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Well.
Well.
I mean, we can't really speak for Mike.
Well, we can't really speak for Mike Moran. He's, couldn't be here tonight because his wife broke her leg, and he's taking care of her, but we would have to have him agree to that.
So you're saying you're not, you can't agree as of tonight, you can't agree to that, to that stipulation, to that?
Yes, we can.
So.
We would have them.
I, I guess what, what she's saying is then, if you're, if we're going to have this voted on by this body without that, then that might, might or might not affect our vote, I guess. So I guess we just have to have it, I guess we just have to-
So you're saying if we don't agree to that, then it might?
I don't know.
Don't know.
I don't know.
A motion might be made to carry it over to the next meeting to allow Mr. Moran to come to some position on it.
Probably the proper thing to do.
I mean, but you represent Mam Investments. You don't have that authority to make that proffer.
Well, we represent him, but on something like this, which I don't think he wants to do, it has to be his decision.
Okay. So I guess we have two options. One is to vote on the, the plan as is with no proffers, or carry it over, have you have an opportunity to have this discussion, and then come back next month. Is that right?
Well, a motion as we made, it hasn't been seconded, but if-
Right.
A motion was made, then you would take a vote on that, and then based on that, you know, well, I don't know.
There's not, there's not, there's not a proffer, though, is my, my point on that.
That's right.
There's not a proffer from the applicant.
That's right.
So we would be voting on something that-
That they have not agreed to. So with that understanding that they're not prepared at this time to approve that proffer, the, the board would need to go forward to, are you, again, you can continue this if that's an issue of concern, or go ahead and vote the way the board wants to.
One of the things is, we bought that property on Mamie Foster way before we bought the two front lots and turned them into retail. We bought that for the hotel. And when we then developed the restaurants, the restaurants didn't need the parking, so didn't require the parking, so we used that for the, it's always been part of the hotel property from day one.
And I think we understand that. I think that the, where we, where we've gotten now is we have two options. One is to proceed and have a vote with the plan as amended as presented to us with no, with no, with no proffer, because you're not making a proffer, or i- if you would, if you wanted to, again, postpone the vote on this, carry it over to the next meeting, at that point, you will have had an opportunity to discuss whether or not, and the answer still could be no, and then we're voting on the same thing. So that's, I think that's where we are right now.
Mr. Roberts, for order, please.
Listen.
I know the public discussion has been closed, but I'm asking for a consideration. Mr. Boylan, you noted something that I said, and what he said is categorically false. I think I should be entitled to it one sentence.
And I'm, I appreciate that, and you've just, you've just said that, but we're not, the, the public portion is closed. We're not entertaining further discussion on, on that issue. So I guess that's the question of how to proceed. Now, you have one member of this commission who has made a request that you cannot agree to as you stand here in front of us.
Correct.
And so either you can, you can say, "Well, we still want to vote, and we'll vote," and make our recommendation one way or the other, or you can hit the pause button, discuss this internally, discuss this with Mr. Moran, and come back next month and go through the same process. And again, you might be telling us the same thing about the sign at that meeting, and we'd just have to vote on, again, the plan as it stands. So.
Right. I understand.
May I ask this question? If we go ahead and vote tonight, we're turned down, so to speak, where, where do we go from there?
This doesn't go, this is amended.
It's going to City Council.
It's, the City Council have to hear.
Because it's an MXD.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Now typically, we have a final approval of, of development plans, but yeah, it's MXD, so the City Council will have to hear it.
So it would be, we'd have to go to the City Council then after that?
That's, that's true regardless of what we, how we vote.
That's right.
So we, we could vote six, no, six, zero in favor, six, zero against.
We want the approval.
Yeah. So we want to vote? We want to vote? Okay. He says we'll pass till next month.
Okay. So we'll adjourn, we'll have a public hearing on the same plan on Jan-, January the 4th at 6:00 p.m.?
Right. Your, your request to be carried over to the January meeting, at which time you'll have a position that you can share with the commission, and we'll take a vote at that time.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we have nothing else on our agenda tonight. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.